Um, yeah, so I am going to review our some findings from our village environmental services contract. Our goal is to provide monitoring data from the village in areas that the village may not be able to kind of monitor themselves. So we have local expertise. We have local uh feet on the ground to go out there and collect samples. And I think we're pretty unique. I think we have a pretty good partnership. And um, so I'm gonna review, you know, a series of projects today. I think some of them probably warrant some discussion, especially, yeah, go ahead. Of course, I think, I think that.
I, uh, there's something going on with the.
There it is. So these are the projects I'm gonna review for you today. Um, I did provide a, a report on the deer project. So if you can refer back to that if you want, and I'm always happy to answer more questions or provide more data on any of these. So then I'm gonna kind of move through more quickly than others. So I actually wanted to start with the forest because the deer questions that we have and the management that we do is really closely related to our management of maritime forest. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the ecology of this maritime forest. We had recognition last week of a bald head island as being an old growth forest, which is very unique. I think it's second in North Carolina, maybe the first in Brunswick County that was recognized by the Old Growth Forest Network. Um, but our maritime forest that we have here is very unique. It's the second largest maritime forest in the state. And it's been given a G two rank, which means it is globally unparalleled. That means that we have a unique uh species composition here that you will not find anywhere else in the world. So it's really important for us to protect this maritime forest. And when I say the forest, I don't just mean the forest reserve, which we are very lucky that this Bald Head Woods Coastal Reserve was set aside. I'm also talking about forested areas throughout the community where, you know, they're subject to development. Uh, not in the same way that you'll find in other communities, but something to think about is that that is a forest entity and habitat that we are, you are responsible for managing. Um, there are impacts to this forest, which can include development, salt spray, storms or bivaries. Some of these are more natural. And the forest is actually adapted to deal with some of these stressors. And I just wanted to point out that the forest, even though there is a lot of wood there, it's not a tinderbox in the same way that um drier areas like the tragedy we saw in California is. This type of forest is well adapted to dealing with salt spray, which means that the leaves are very thick, leathery. It's very damp. If you ever walk into that maritime forest, it's very humid and mosquitoey. Um, so it's very unlikely for it to be subject to fire in the same way that other forest types are. Happy to answer more questions about that. I know there are concerns about, you know, everybody is concerned about what's happening with forest fires. Um, in terms of the work that's been done in the past, there are these exposures and we've talked about these before. So there are these sensed areas that are meant to exclude deer. And it's meant to be a long-term study to see if, okay, what happens if deer are kept out of these areas compared to other areas where they're not kept out of, or be able to see the impacts of their herbivory on the forest. Because if they're just going in and mowing everything down the forest, we want to know about that because then that's kind of a, an issue that we need to manage this year. So those plots were built in two thousand and seven. They were sampled in twenty eleven. And they were sampled again in twenty twenty, but the problem is that they weren't maintained from twenty eleven to twenty twenty. So we actually don't have any data on our bivory um since twenty eleven. So we don't really know what the impacts of deer are of course right now. Now it's not. And fancy. Thank you. Okay, so in twenty eleven, um, this is the study that was done. It showed no difference between the controls and the exposures. So at that time, there were about two hundred deer on the island. They said, all right, it seems like the deer are not having an impact on the forest right now. The deer had been managed up until that point using culls. And, you know, seems like two hundred might be a sustainable number of deer. Um, as I said, in twenty twenty, we reestablished the plots. We didn't, we did sampling, but like I said, those, uh, those plots had not been maintained at that point. So we've been maintaining them since then so that we will have five years of data that's coming here. So working with J D Forester, we're recommending that we go ahead and collect data on those forested areas to see if there are impacts of deer herbivory for the past five years and continue to maintain those exposures. Okay. So what's happening with the deer? So as I mentioned, uh, those studies of the forest were done back in this time. So at that time, the deer population was under control using culling. Uh, there had been a series of calls. That's kind of why there are these up and down. There had been maybe three hundred, three hundred fifty deer on the island. Then there'd be a series of calls, then they pop back up again because they have a higher production rate. Um, but starting in twenty fourteen, there was an immun contraception program that was begun, partnership between the village and uh Baldwin Conservancy. And you can see that during this time, and this is when we started our fall camera surveys too, the population stayed fairly stable despite not, not doing calls. Um, so we do these surveys twice a year. We do a spotlight survey in the summertime. We do a camera study in the fall. And we calculate the population number every year. Um, so that's what contributes to this graph that you see here. And what you may notice is that, you know, we have not done immun contraception or any management since twenty twenty. And now this year we've popped above that two hundred recommended target level. We're at two hundred and twenty one deer. Um, and we also have a lot of fawns out there. So thirty fawns on our study. So we're back to pre twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen numbers of fawn. And this is expected. We stopped managing them. Deer do what deer do. We're not gonna reproduce. Um, but the issue here is that not only are we above our target for the island, we're also at a density of deer that is higher than anywhere in the state. So um, by any estimation, these deer population numbers are very, very high. Um, in terms of the surveys, I think it's important to continue doing surveys. So that would be a recommendation for budget just to keep doing the surveys. And then we do recommend some kind of population management. What kind of population management that is, is up to you all. Uh, we can talk about a few different options. So I just wanted to review what the process of immun contraception is because a lot of you were not on council when we did this last time. Um, but basically what's involved is it's the village's decision whether to pursue it or not. So this is a non-lethal method. It's giving them birth control and it's two injections. So you have to give them an injection one year and then a booster shot the next year for it to be effective. But the village decides whether to fund the project and whether to pursue the permit. We can, the Conservancy can pursue that permit from the Wildlife Resources Commission on behalf of the village. The permitting process has actually changed and become more simplified, which is nice. It used to be a whole like proposal situation and now it's, we can um apply just from year to year. It does not have to be a research project. It could be an operational permit and um it's like a one-page form. Um, I talked with the Wildlife Resources Commission last week about the process and they said that that is kind of what we could expect from that. Um, and then, you know, our team, we're, we're scientists, but we're like marine scientists. So we actually have to hire, recruit and hire and train a team of specialists to actually go out there and operationally do the work. So they're the ones starting the deer, capturing the deer, doing a medical workup on the deer, collecting blood samples um and monitoring their health. And they're, they're well-trained. We're very careful about how that's done. And I think that's important on this island. I think in the past it had been subcontracted out to a different group that just weren't as careful, didn't have quite the understanding of the needs of the island in terms of safety, public communication and the desire for the health of the deer. Um, as I said, there are two doses that need to be given over two years for full efficacy, which when we did our study was eighty-six percent success at avoiding pregnancy in the deer. And this is kind of the timeline. So if you focus on the right side, this is where we would be. So we would be getting our population numbers uh applying for a permit uh in like this time of year. And then going ahead and working towards hiring staff depending on, you know, the budget decision that's made by the village. And then um, those population numbers go into deciding how many deer that we'd be targeting for immun contraception, which would happen in fall, wintertime. And a big change now is that we used to have to wait until the end of the hunting season to do amino operations. But now that has been waived, so we could potentially do it starting in October. I don't know, depending on what you wanted in terms of, there are still a lot of people that are out in October, so um. But the benefit of that potentially is that the deer are, they have maximum hormones in their body at that time. So the drug is potentially more effective if you give it to them during their pred, during the hunting season. Any questions about the process?
Not, not necessarily the process, but um, so the, so back one slide, I'll look at the timing. So we, we started immu- immun contraception in twenty fifteen?
Uh, fourteen, I believe.
Huh?
Fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
I think it's twenty fourteen.
And so here we are in twenty twenty-five. So we've gone ten years and we, and that process managed the herd pretty well.
It managed it, yeah, until twenty twenty when we stopped. So we were at the point where from that population was low, we actually didn't have any deer to give the drug to.
Got it.
So, yeah, it did.
So how much money?
The extremes in the chart is when we were doing calling, which really only for two years. You, you.
Chris might remember, um.
The effectiveness of calling was short-term versus uh.
So you're taking, taking a big chunk out of the population, but everybody who's left is still fertile, so they have to replace themselves.
Right. Guess what I'm trying to get at is how much money did we spend on intra-immun contraception over what is, uh, to me, it looks like about a ten-year period when it's time to do something again?
You did it for seven years, seven seasons, I think. It's, it, it's not cheap. It is, it's what, sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year?
Per year, okay.
Just for the immune, just for the field, for the field operations portion. Yeah, maybe even a little bit more, so.
The sixty thousand is about.
That's a hundred thousand dollar estimate somewhere in your.
I put that as a high-end estimate.
Okay.
I have not done the whole budget yet because it, it depends a lot. Things may have changed since twenty twenty in terms of the personnel and things like that. That's the most expensive part is the personnel.
How much impact do you think the coyotes had, sorry, frog in my throat, the coyotes had on the deer population?
Um, I think they kept it at bay for a little bit. Um, you can see, you know, we didn't have an immediate doubling of the population. I think they can keep the fawns at bay a little bit. But we'll talk in a minute about, I think we have maybe eight to twelve coyotes on the island. So you're not gonna have, eight to twelve coyotes are not gonna be, eh, they're not gonna be taking a, a fawn every week or anything. And they're, they're just not able to keep up at this point, I don't think.
The coyote population seems to be down. Is that, is that accurate or just mis-reception?
I'll show you.
Okay.
Um, I think, I think there have been some reductions in the popul- like uh, reduction on their rate of growth too. Um, possibly due to trapping by poor fisher, but. Um, yeah, so they can't handle the deer population by themselves. Now, calling is a lot, lot cheaper. Um, the other thing, so anyway, here's my list of considerations. Um, I talked with Wildlife Resources last week, like I said. And I went through all the possibilities with them too. Of course, it's hard for them to understand the culture on Bald Head Island and the lack of hunting here compared to every place else in the state. Why don't they just hunt them, you know? Yeah, I know. Um, but i- and then they brought up the question, if it's not socially accepted to hunt on the island, is that just an assumption that we're making? Maybe, maybe the public opinion has changed. So one thing that they recommended was maybe deploying a survey or doing, I don't know how you would evaluate public opinion if you're concerned about there being public outcry about, you know, hunting or doing a cull. Um, they asked if there are other considerations besides protection of the forest. And back in the nineties, there were concerns about the herd size being above what we call social carrying capacity. There were a lot of complaints about um, people hitting deer with their golf carts or with trams about, or concerned that they're eating all of our, our plantings in our garden. Um, I haven't really heard much of that, but I don't know if you all have. It's, it seems like people are fairly content with the number of deer. I don't, I don't know anything Josh about.
Yeah.
Things about deer.
Haven't had any deer sharks.
No. Yeah, that's good, that's good. And then in terms of the health of the animals, uh, they're healthy. They're, I think they have plenty of food. Um, we had a couple of mortalities this past year, but when they did knee proxies, they were for other reasons. They weren't like starving or wasting away. Um, but we do have much dens- higher densities than anywhere in the state and that did give Wildlife Resources some concern about, um, you know, what are they doing potentially to the vegetation here in the forest? They don't just hang out in the forest though. We see them all over the golf course, you know? They like the dunes, they like the sides of the roads, so maybe they're finding enough food elsewhere. Um, cost is a big consideration. Effectiveness, so um, if, for example, we were to wait a year or two, it will take a long time to reduce that population size without doing an initial call. Because we're just slowing their reproduction rate. We're not actually taking individuals out of the population. So if you're okay with two twenty-one, okay, but are you okay with three hundred? Is that, that may be where we are a year from now. Um, alternative, so um, there are some changes too to regulations with bow hunting. So um, that's another possibility that maybe people might find more acceptable. And dividing the harvested meat, you know, maybe people would feel more comfortable with the idea of a call or, or targeted hunting if there's donation of the meat. So um, these are all considerations.
In, in the past, would the calls, did we donate the meat?
Yes.
We did.
Yes, we did. So to answer the question about when you do a call, is that just, um, is it a control group of hunters?
Yeah.
Is it just?
Yeah, it's not open season. I mean, I, and this is up to y'all too. It's how you want to, let me handle it. Um. I think usually the way municipalities handle it is there are sharpshooters involved, so I don't know where they get those folks from, but um, and it would be, you know, a short period of time, maybe quietest time on the island. In closed off roads. I don't, I don't know exactly how it's done because I wasn't here at the time, but.
There are companies that you can hire and um, not to say that the deer are pests, but pest control.
Right.
Uh, you can hire them, they'll come in, give them a number, you won't take it out of the population. That's what they'll do. They'll come in, they usually have silencers. They're not attracted through the government. So that they have silencers, so it's not loud for the, the community.
Yeah, I, I just could recently heard, now the calling was a long time ago. But complaints about how that was telling who was here and some of that kind of stuff. I think that was, if we even thought about that, we'd have to consider. Have some experience with it.
Take care of that.
What's that?
There's definitely companies now that will take care of that. Uh, St. James uses a, a company to.
Okay.
For that as well.
And how, and what would the cost of a calling operation be for a year?
So here's, so here's what I know, because so, so the last time we did this, Micah, we turned, he was our lead tech, but we turned his work into a bigger project he did with empty state. I think the estimate was about six hundred dollars per deer. I think for the call, I think is what it was. Um, it's five, five something, five hundred or six hundred dollars, something per deer, I think.
So it's a lot. I, I would say ten percent of the price of the cost. It's, it was a lot less. But we can look at those numbers. They're all at this point.
Yep, because that was a while ago, ten years ago.
Um, I, I will say that I know that there, because there are deer out there that have tags on them. So, you know, the, the tagged deer are the ones that we've captured in the past. We know that their drugs have worn off, so there's really no advantage to, you know, try to target certain numbers or certain individuals at this point. It's not like we're trying to give them a repeat of the birth control. It doesn't have to be the ones that are tagged now versus the ones that have, that are not tagged. Um, but there are a lot of like personal feelings towards certain individual deer because they have those tags. So it's like, like people can identify, they know where that one hangs out and what their habits are, so. I, I really don't know. I mean, the, the population of the island in terms of the human population has changed so much over the past ten years that I don't know how people can feel about it. As long as I've been here, people have thought, I mean, they thought it's interesting that we do it. We get a lot of questions saying like, why spend all this time and money on this? I feel like it's because we're in a unique, we live in a unique place where people really do appreciate the wildlife and may have a hard time thinking about killing them. Um, but.
Your first item under cost that um actually says that we would need an initial call regardless?
Um, I don't think you would need, and I don't think you would need. It depends on your goal. If your goal is that we want to start below two hundred deer, then yes.
Okay.
Um, if your initial goal is that we want to, I mean, if you go back to some of the literature, they actually recommend densities of deer that are more like, our numbers would be a hundred deer for the islands. If you wanted to get down to that level that the literature recommends, definitely you would need to have a call.
Got it. Okay.
Um.
But two hundred was based on what's perceived to be no degradation of the forest?
Yes, that study back in twenty eleven. I feel like that's kind of a compromise number. Like that's maybe, maybe our island can sustain a higher number than other places because we have, we're really well, we have really good habitat here. But I will say also that our habitat has decreased by about five percent over the past ten years because of development. Um, so if you were to ask me, if you were to force me to make a recommendation, um, I would say, and, and you know, Chris and I are very hesitant with this too because immun contraception is a big job. And it's operationally very, like logistically very challenging. So it's, we can do it. Um, but it's been kind of nice to not talk to us last year, like we've been able to focus on other things. So anyway, um, if you were to start, restart immun contraception, we could get it going this winter. I, you would really need to do it for two years because you need to do that initial dose and then the, the follow-up vaccination. Um, I think it would probably be a good idea to survey the public, even if you go ahead and start with immun contraception. Maybe do a survey and see what they think and reassess in a couple of years whether you want to keep going with it. And then by that time, we'll also have the data from the forest vegetation sampling. And we can provide, you know, we have the human data, we have the forest data, um, and maybe reevaluate in twenty twenty-seven. But hopefully at that point, the population hasn't gotten out of control, but it's still at like a two twenty-two fifty level.
Okay. Our perspective.
Didn't we do the immun contraception? Did we do it for like six years or six or seven years?
Yeah.
Kevin, we did immun contraception.
So you, you gotta continue to do it, right?
Yep.
So when you say it, it would be two years, it'd be two years to kind of jumpstart it.
At least two years, yeah.
Or else we end up in the same situation where we are post-two thousand and twenty, right? It just, okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's like the sand on the beach, kind of has to keep.
Yeah.
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 Um, if, if the forest is down by about five percent since two thousand and eleven, should the number be one ninety instead of two hundred for the deer? Well, not with that, we don't know without the study, right?
Um, you mean the total pop, like chocolate availability? Um, that would be, that's another consideration. It's really hard because we don't have hard enough numbers or guidelines. Um, as I said, the maritime forest is so unique that there are not equivalent systems for us to compete with too. There are some studies that have been done in Georgia. They kind of have different issues down there. So we're dealing, we're working from a study that was done here on Bald Head in the early two thousands. And then there was another study that was done on a barrier island in North, I forget exactly where it was, but it was like the lake. So there really hasn't been much done, so it's kind of hard to pin all of our decisions on, you know, like two numbers from two studies that are.
And are those the studies that you said would suggest a much lower number?
Yeah, they said fifteen to seventeen per square kilometer. So that would give us a little over a hundred total on our island.
Just trying to figure out whether we need to do a call and, and start the immun contraception.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would give you, I mean, that's, you know that it's gonna be effective right away because those individuals are taken out of the population. Um.
So the cost of uh, I'm not gonna pronounce this, contraception is gonna be less, you're fewer, fewer deer. I mean, if you're trying to hit a certain percentage and all of a sudden, oh, we only have a hundred deer now. And so we're, that's our, our baseline that we're working from.
So except that the, the actual number of deer that you dart, the cost of that, the cost of mobilization, just like with the dredging, cost of mobilization is a big thing. You still have to hire the staff. It may shorten it a little bit, but it's not, it's not like a substantially
Got it.
different cost because the mobilization is.
Yeah.
Yeah, Beth, I think a few years ago you, you had recommended that we could stop the contraception case because of the numbers that we had. So we're just.
They were low and, and now they're, they're back.
And now they're coming back, but.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm.
It's not every year. It, so it's not necessarily, I'm sorry, every year forever, in other words.
Well, what happened then was they did a call before that study started. So they, they did a call to bring it down to a baseline level and then, um, and then they were able to maintain that. So here in twenty-four, so there were, there was, there were calls done here.
Okay.
Um, and then they were able to keep that number, they're aiming for that target of below two hundred. They're able to maintain that. Um, they, yeah, then we got to twenty twenty and we had a, a part of the permit that said you had to leave thirty deer in the population that had not been touched for like genetic reasons that, you know, they didn't become inbred. And we just didn't have any, you know, they, at that point, they're only the ones that needed their second dose and was very inefficient because we're trying to find certain individuals out there. I will say that year one, if you start it, year one will be pretty fast, I think, because you can, they'll be able to target any deer that they find. They'll be able to give them a dose.
I'm, I'm just trying to think through the best long-term sustainable deer management. And, and, and if you, you know, and compare the upfront mobilization costs every year for immun contraception, um, where you may be only targeting a few deer versus when you. In year one or two, you can dart a lot of them because the numbers are up, right? Versus a calling operation where if our target number is two hundred, um, and we have two hundred and twenty deer out there, then we're calling twenty deer this year times six hundred or seven, whatever the cost is.
Seven.
And every year you just plan on calling ten to twenty deer instead of waiting until it's too late. You gotta call a bunch of them.
Right. So I think your recommendation, get a sense of the social reaction to any, anything we do. Let's look at the cost and then look at different variables that would affect either one.
Yeah, I think if I were looking at it just from a practical standpoint, it seems obvious to either allow hunting or calling because, I mean, I like deer. I have my favorites. But from a management perspective, it just seems like the most logical. But after working with Chris McCall for so many years, and I see the look of panic on his face when, when you start talking about that, it's like the, you have to think about the impact on your staff, um, and the potential public outcry. I mean, uh, you were probably all here during the coyote potential coyote trapping a few years ago. And like the amount of time that that took for staff to have to talk to people and deal with complaints and our staff too uh, is not insubstantial, so something to consider.
I think the other side too, uh, I think the displacement of funds. It's like, yeah, we're gonna do this. Now, is this more important or this is more effective than if you say, uh, given we're gonna spend sixty, seventy thousand dollars, like, you know, we should be doing that somewhere else. And we're gonna get the impact of that we're looking for in a cheaper way.
So the one thing I will say, the immun contraception was initially funded. So the one thing I will say, the immun contraception was initially funded by a private group.
Yeah.
And then it was turned over to us through the village contract. So that was an important thing that wasn't the village deciding to do this to start with. And I don't know, the reason why they picked it up was before I got here and I don't, I don't know why that happened. But it was a private group that, that chose to put it in place.
Okay. Well, we can look into that too.
I think it's.
That's great.
Part of the conversation. And there's, there's still a few of those folks around. I don't know.
I was on the ferry with all of them yesterday, day before.
Okay. Thanks, Pat.
Right. So moving forward to the rest of our village contracts, I have good news about creek water quality. So we, um, we sample from four sites weekly. And then that's during the daytime. And then we also do overnight sampling. We reduced it this past year to just doing it during the warm months. When there might be the biggest cause for concern with the 24 hour sampling that I mentioned here. So some big graphs, I wish I could like, try to focus on the top graph. So the overall story is that the creek water quality is in fairly good condition. So this top graph. Um, I'm showing chlorophyll A and that's the plant pigment that indicates algae. And then here is dissolved oxygen. So these are kind of our main concerns in estuaries when you might have a lot of nutrients going into a water body. You can get overgrowth of algae and then that can cause low oxygen hypoxia, fish kills. Uh, things of that nature. So the good news is that our creek. We do see a reduction in dissolved oxygen in the warmer months. That's kind of normal because. The, the water can't hold as much oxygen when it's warmer. That being said, we have a cutoff here for hypoxia of two milligrams per liter. And we never really reached that. We get kind of close in the middle of the summer. But it shouldn't, it, it might be to a level where it causes a little bit of stress for animals, but it shouldn't be. To the extent where it's causing like massive fish kills or anything like that. Um, and then similarly, the algae concentrations here, we had a little. Spike in the middle of the summer where we went above the North Carolina standard for chlorophyll. But for the most part, we're pretty low. Uh, so there's enough algae in there to provide food for the organisms, but. Not so much that it's causing an issue. So that's good. Um, and then we also measure bacteria. We've done, we've had some shifts in the types of bacteria that we measure and we're doing all this in-house now. But we are now measuring E. coli and then also enterococci. The E. coli is what's used for shellfish sanitation decisions. People call it forms an E. coli. And enterococci is what they use for recreational decisions like swimming beaches. And our data are not, you, these data are not used by the state to make decisions about closing waters. But they give us an indication of any issues that we might be having. And you can see that we, we only topped above these standards a couple of times. And then, you know, this time was during PTC eight. So when you get flooding and you have kind of backup of your, your. Sewage pumps, things like that, you can get bacteria going into the creek. So the story is if there's a storm, if there's a lot of flooding. Probably don't go swimming in the creek right after that. I think people for the most part know that anyway. Um, but this also leads into some questions that we've been having. Uh, we were talking earlier about the entrance of the creek. Now the entrance of the creek is closing, shoaling up a little bit. And I've had questions about whether that's impacting water quality. And so far, no, we haven't seen any issues with water quality. I think that enough water still gets through through tidal flushing that, uh, we have quite a bit of water moving through the system. These are some more complicated graphs. This is me like playing with data. And, uh, so this is our overnight sampling that we do. So we have again dissolved oxygen and chlorophyll. And each of these is over the course of a night. So we're going from 6:00 AM, I'm sorry, yeah, 6:00 AM. On one day to 6:00 AM the next day. Then we have our head site and our mouth site. We only do two of the sites. So this is just looking again to see if any issues with overnight hypoxia because. Um, that's when you tend to see the lowest oxygen concentrations in water is right before dawn. And you can see that, um, we do see this daily trend. This is very normal. But again, we're never really reaching below that two milligrams per liter cutoff. So I don't have concerns about hypoxia at these sites. Uh, the chlorophyll is kind of interesting. This is the first year that we looked at chlorophyll for these overnight samples. And this is basically showing that that chlorophyll is moving in and out on the tide. So, um, it's moving up and down from the head site to the mouth site. Most of that phytoplankton is produced within the creek and then it moves out into the river. So we're recommending that we continue with sampling. I think it's a good idea to just keep. Monitoring water quality, making sure that we're in good shape and be able to provide. Answers to questions when people have them, especially up in these storm events.
Oh, just, um, if it's a one sentence answer, great. Why is the oxygen changing in the core? Why do you have that change?
But it's just this.
Got it. Okay. Thanks. Okay.
And, and respiration. So.
Okay.
I'll be, you know, 2:00 PM, we can do a presentation lecture on that, but, um. Yes. So the aquifer, this was interesting this year because of PTC eight. So this is a model that Peter Zamora, our collaborator, put together a couple of years ago. This is showing. Uh, we talked about how the groundwater is a little lens that sits under the surface of our feet. And sometimes that lens comes above the surface and we get flooding. So this is showing how it is kind of lens shaped. So we have like the warmer colors in the middle of the island. Where we have a higher groundwater and then on the edges that, um. That size of the groundwater lens thins out on the edges. So we take depth of water measurements monthly and then quarterly we pump out the groundwater to look for water quality of the groundwater. Um, and here is some long-term data. So we have two sections of the aquifer that we consider. We look at the superficial aquifer and the deep aquifer. So some of those wells. Are going, you know, maybe halfway down and then some of them go all the way deep into the deep aquifer. So we did, we can see a positive trend in the deep aquifer. Over time. So this is like increasing groundwater through time in the deep aquifer. The superficial aquifer, there is not a trend. So, you know, this is something that we would have concerns if, because of our pumping and our use of groundwater. If we are seeing a big negative trends through time, that would be something that we need to talk about. But we're not seeing that right now. Um, and then for water quality, again, this is something we keep an eye on because if we're starting to see. A lot of saltiness, salinity in our groundwater, then that was, that's something that would be a cause for concern as well. Um, so this is showing conductivity, which is a proxy for solidity. So these warmer values here are where we do have some saltiness and salt in the groundwater. So little island, the aquifer is very, very thin because that island is very thin. And then we do have some spots here on the edges of our aquifer where that lens is very thin. Where there is some salt in the deep groundwater. So, but it's not encroaching, it's not increasing through time as of now. And this is a cool analysis that, I don't know, I think it's thoroughly cool that Chris asked me to put together. So we were getting a lot of questions after PTC eight and I'm sure you guys were too. When the pumping is happening and all this water is being removed by yards, why does it keep coming back? You know, why? Well, the reason is that a lot of those areas were in areas where there is a high groundwater table. And so we looked at the data from September to October. To see how much change there was in the groundwater table from September to October due to PTC eight. And in these areas of South Beach down here, there were three feet of extra groundwater in those areas. So this, these are like the. The brown pelican and those areas that were flooding. So basically what's happening is you're removing the water and then it's just, it's bubbling up from the groundwater. And it's just, there's so much extra water in that, that aquifer. So that's kind of cool. So I think it's important to continue this monitoring. There is monitoring that was done in the maritime forest that we were not doing. Right now anymore, but Jim Cornet's group has, uh, automated monitors on those wells. So that could be revisited if you're interested in looking at those automated wells.
Yeah. Could you back up one slide? The, well, yes, in the lower. Under the deep well, you've got yellow on, uh, right there at South Beach. Yes. Do you have, and, and I've seen your positive trend on deep wells. It's just slightly up.
Yeah.
But when it comes to salinity, do you have a measure of that over time?
I do.
For that particular well, huh?
And there's no trend.
Okay, good. So it's staying the same. Good. Not getting worse. Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Good eye, Scott.
Anytime you want to come out sampling the wells.
I join you on this.
Okay. So, uh, this is another big project, maybe not the most like science, this is where we get our exercise every week with beach bytax. So beach bytax is an invasive plant. Um, it's been here on the island. We've been treating it since 2006. We've been doing some digging into our historical data, which has been interesting this year. And this is just a beast. It displaces native plants like sea oats. Um, so it's not helping at all with our erosion issues on the, on the dunes because the sea oats do a better job anchoring the dunes. It also could potentially interfere with sea turtle nesting. It has been shown to do that in other places. So this is something that we've been trying to remove. Oh no.
There you go.
There we go.
For a series of, a number of years, we've been using this method sometimes, which is recommended. But. And so just trying to upgrade Karen and that might, it's not working. Okay, cool. Like I said, we dug into the historical data. I've been here since 2018 and you can see this red line. I thought, I thought it was doing pretty well with the bytax. Okay, you know, we're doing great. We're reducing it. But then you look back in the 2000s at. How little there was when they really went in and tried to tear it off. I think they were using Roundup at the time as well. Uh, it just made me think like, we could probably do better. So. We had done an experiment for a few years where we were removing it. And then treating the stumps and that was looking promising. So we decided this past year. To just go for it and try to just eradicate it. So tear it all out from everywhere on the island. Treat those stumps. The village helped us with the dumpster. And it is a huge job, but we are making progress. So here's some pictures with what it looks like, you know, in an individual section where we go in and we just. Pull everything out. We either cut it or uproot it. And you can see like how big some of these branches are. And we're just people power out there. Um, but so far we're about two thirds done with the sites. We've cleared them. Put it in the dumpster. And I know that some of this stuff is going to come back. It's very pervasive. But I think that removing that plant material will be so much better because it won't be producing the seeds. Anymore. So I think that we'll just be able to go in there and treat it and stay on top of it better by doing that, clearing it, kind of like a call.
Expertise in doing that? Is this basically grunt work that anybody could do?
Yeah.
And do we have any volunteers that join the conservancy in the supper or are you guys just doing it yourselves?
Trying it. Um, but we'd be glad to have volunteers. It's always.
That's, that's the question.
In the middle of summer. So we don't, we haven't been doing this in the middle of the summer. And that's usually when we get, you know, like the high school kids wanting to volunteer and.
Right.
We have not subjected them to this in like August. Something that's ideally done in fall, winter, when it's a little more.
Okay.
Um, but it is, yeah, I'm at the point now where like, let's just get it out of there. So, um, so that's something that we should.
We should have that conversation.
Yeah. Um, and then step two is I really want to get, um. Native plants in there. So maybe next year after we're sure that the herbicide has, has kind of like. Uh, moved out of the system. We should go in there and plant natives because you can see how much vegetation is removed from these areas.
We're not, we're using a hazipier, which is different and it's painted onto the stem. It's not a brand, just to make that clear. We're not randomly.
We're not using Roundup anymore. And that was a decision that was made in the, like 2010s. And I think that might be some of the difference in the effectiveness. Roundup is very effective. Unfortunately, it's also very toxic. Um, and hazipier is great because it targets plants and targets an enzyme that other organisms don't have. So we know it's not toxic to us all. All right. Um, let's move on to alligators real quick. We do weekly spotlight surveys in the summertime. And we are currently working up our data in a more detailed way presented at conferences spring. So I hope to have a really cool analysis for you guys in the summertime. This is just showing. Our, our total numbers of sightings through time. Again, we're trying to dig into our historical data a little more. But from 2007 to 2024, uh, we think the population is increasing a bit. Um, we're going to look at the different size classes to see kind of like what their growth rate is, what their maturation rate is. My big concern this year has been that we've had a couple of mortalities in the past two years of larger alligators. That have had contaminants either in their blood or some, some kind of issue with them. And the one that, um, died about a year ago. They, Wildlife Resources didn't need Propstion and found, uh, lead weights in its stomach. So it was a fishing related. Lead poisoning. It had three times the amount of lead in its blood that is manageable for an alligator. So with that, Scott Belter, our collaborator, collaborator started going back into his samples and looking at lead levels in all the blood and all of the samples. And a lot of them have high lead concentrations in the blood. So. This is something that I would like to talk with village more about. I, I think we could maybe do better with BHA as well. With the public information campaign about fishing in the, in the lagoons. Um, it's a safety issue for humans, but now we also know it's a safety issue for wildlife. So.
Beth, just to add to that, the club doesn't allow fishing in lagoons.
No.
But I can't tell you how often I'm out there golfing and people are fishing. And it's very hard to police it.
I know. Maybe, maybe we could have a, a workshop or something where we can all sit and maybe think about ideas and what might be more effective. I mean, Scott was even talking about, oh, they make, you can get fishing weights that are not lead based. And we can promote use of that. And I'm like, well, we don't want to promote, promote them fishing at all. I don't really know what that looks like, but.
I think if we would want to pull the real estate agents into the discussion to educate the renters.
Good idea. Uh, so coyotes, to get to your question, um, once again, Dugington sort data. So this is. This is sighting data from our deer spotlight surveys. So whenever we're out there looking for deer, we also write down if we see a fox or a coyote. And, um, you can see that back in the, you know, mid 2000s, we would see a lot of foxes, but not very many coyotes. We know that we did see a coyote, I think in 2007, there might have been one. Um, so they've been on the island since 2007, but here you see, this is where we are really concerned. In 2019 was when they were getting into our sea turtle, but yeah, 2019 was when they were getting into sea turtle nests. And they had like quadrupled in numbers on our surveys. Then they came down a little bit, like you notice, we did not see any in 2022. And now we're starting to see them again on our surveys. So, um, they're still out there. We did a scat survey two years ago that showed that. Based on their genetics, it looked like there were eight to 12 coyotes from at least two family groups plus a couple of other individuals. And we're repeating that this year. So we'll have data next year on how many we think there are now and how they're related to each other. We did find that there is some connectivity with Fort Fisher. So we know that. Those families do travel between here and Fort Fisher. And at Fort Fisher, they do trapping of the coyotes and foxes to help manage their sea turtles and shorebirds. So I feel like whatever they're doing there could be. Um, either a stop on coyotes coming to us or they could open up. Like habitat for our coyotes to maybe go up there. So it's interesting.
Is that trapping possibly also affecting the fox population?
So the foxes, we believe the issue was a just temporary outbreak in the mid 2000s. So they were really reduced. And I think that at that point, the coyotes probably use that to their advantage to. So we do still have a few foxes on the island, but definitely not the numbers that we have before. Now I mean, that terrapin is something that we've been monitoring for the past few years. There are species of conservation concern. And really this came up a few years ago when DMF implemented Diamondback Terrapin Management Area for Bald Head Island and Masonboro. So that means that all crab pots in our area have to have these terrapin excluder devices. And that's to keep the terrapins from going into the crab pots and going for the bait and they'll go in there and they'll drown. This has been a good partnership with the village. We've produced these little devices. We've handed them out. People who have crab pots are usually pretty good about putting them on there. Um, but we have seen a big. Um, but we have seen a big increase in terrapin mortality this past year. We had seventeen and they're mostly concentrated on West Beach. And I think that this is probably due to commercial crabbers primarily who are not always using these. That's, um, and that's hard, hard for us to regulate. It's hard for the village to do anything about because they're not, you know, it's really up to Marine Patrol to police that. But a lot of these crab pots are in our creek. So this is showing the green are terrapin sightings. This is during the terrapin tallies that we do with the state every year. And then the pink and the orange are crab pots. So you can see how much they overlap. The terrapins are in the same area where these crab pots are. And if they don't have that little excluder, the terrapins could just very easily go in there and drown. And then the crabbers will just like throw them out when they, they release their catch. So, um, I think this is important to continue doing, to report what's out there. When we first start reporting mortalities to the state, they're really shocked at how many we have. I mean, these could be coming down from the whole Cape Fear River, not just our creeks. Um, but they're cute little turtles. And, um, and they're really understudied. So we're lucky that we live in an area where, where they're here. Um, but I just want to continue making sure that we're monitoring the population. A good news story, which is our shorebirds. So we've heard a lot about the terminal groin. And this is the area where our lease turns are camping and nesting. So I started working here in two thousand and eighteen and I took it personally because the lease turns did not nest here anymore. But suddenly in the past few years, we've started to have some lease turn nests on, uh, in the terminal groin area. And then a few on, uh, that spit that's been floating at access one as well. So we monitor those populations for the state. We put up these postings. And we try to educate the public on keeping their dogs out of these areas. And that's really challenging too, with renters coming every week, trying to explain to them that their dog shouldn't be running free during daylight hours and disturbing these little guys, which you can barely see, um, up or down in the sand. And they don't have a nest. This is their nest. It's just a little hollow on the sand and you could just step on them if you don't see them, so. Cute. All right. And then finally, the living shoreline. This has been a work in progress, but, uh, fingers crossed, this is all coming to fruition in the next month or so. So in Marina Park, this is where we have, it's been part of the budget for the past two years to create this living shoreline to help with erosion in this area. And, um, this is what it's proposed to look like. It goes out, it's kind of like plaster, paper mache, and then the oysters just grow on it and they form a reef. Um, so we had to delay this because that bulkhead had to be replaced last year after it was damaged. But the bulkhead is in place now. It looks like everything's a go and we have date, February twenty fourth. Talk about volunteers if you're here on the island. It's Monday. Love to have you out there helping us with those little units in place, so probably a little shoreline. Right, that's all I have. Um, again, I think it's such a unique place to live and work. And let's not forget the beauty of the environment and importance of conserving it when we're making decisions. And we're happy to help with any questions you have.
Okay, thanks so much. Thank you.